Ordinances, let's see, for approval, we're back to, proposed ordinance number 2016-22, dash 21, I'm sorry. An ordinance amending the annual budget revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2016, for the city of Harahan.
Do we need a, who it's, it's all about by council?
Yeah, it was proposed unanimously.
Okay. This is from, this is a budget amendment for 2016. I would like to address the chief, the police chief's concern about insurance liability that he's, we've talked about in the past. When the 2016, oh, I'm sorry, I don't have this on. I'd like to address the police chief's concern about liability insurance. When the 2016 budget was passed, Ms. Lulu used Postal Weight and Etterville's methodology that divided this expense across departments by percent of the budget. During the audit, which happened after the budget, during that audit, however, Ms. Lulu, while working with Postal Weight and Etterville and the legislative auditor, they agreed to a different methodology that Ms. Lulu had determined. We had the actual policies, so we didn't have to allocate insurance expense by department expense. It would be unfair, so the actual policy could be applied. So that is the methodology. So originally, the percent way, the police department looked like they needed $101,000 in that line item. That's unfair. It makes them look like their expense line item is higher, so the actual numbers were applied. The actual numbers for the police department, for example, is the actual expense will be So other departments who really do have that higher number allocated to them will need money in their line item for insurance liability, so that they don't get caught over budget. This in the past was done in 2014 in a one-sided entry, meaning the auditor just came in and arbitrarily during the audit, put an expense on departments. That's not fair, because then it made it look like they weren't working within their budget. So 2015, we noted that, we put up a budget amendment to fix that problem, so no one would be caught with an expense that wasn't budgeted for. That's not fair. We put up a budget amendment, and it wasn't seconded. So unfortunately, one of the departments that suffered was the police department, and it affected audit findings unfairly. So moving forward, especially since we have an email from the legislative auditor, accepting this methodology of using the actual insurance liability policies, we know what the costs are, we want to put those real costs into the budget, so that there are no surprises at the audit, no emergencies, that the police have the right amount for, that's going to be expense to them, he'll have that money budgeted, and then every other department will have that also. So that is one of the things that we would like to amend tonight. So I want to clarify, it's not taking away money, it's actually taking the total amount of money that we knew that is expected to come to the city to pay. The auditor stated it had to go across departments and allocate it. It's been determined what that allocation is by the exact policy. We've got approval by the legislative auditor and the former city auditor. And that's one of the major things that we've tried to change, and we're trying to amend tonight. It's not about taking money away from salaries, or items to buy, or what you can or cannot purchase. It's about the liability insurance that the city purchases for the city state, citywide. The other important note is that in an email, our city CPA, finance administrator, informed our council of a change in operations. There were ma, three major change in operations. The changes in operations were to the sewer fund, sales tax fund, DEQ. Well, I should say, there's two thing, there are two major reasons to amend. Change in operations, and if you're within the 5% rule by, that governs, the led, the local government budget act governs that we have to change the budget and amend if we're not within the 5% rule. So the funds that are affected by those two circumstances are the sewer fund, sales tax fund, and all of the DEQ funds. That's really basically very important for us to, that's why it's very important for us to amend tonight, the 2016 budget. Also, that 2016 budget gives us the numbers that allows us to have the truest numbers for the 2017 budget that we adopt tonight. Ms. Lulu, do you have any thing, any additional things to say to that?
The beginning fund balances for 2016 also need to be adopted tonight, because, you know, 2015 audit final, final numbers are obviously in, and our budget for 2016 is based upon wrong ending numbers, because, you know, life is different than what we budgeted for the beginning of the year. So those numbers need to be budgeted, and I didn't hear you say the bond sinking and the bond reserve funds.
I'm sorry.
Because we've paid those bonds off, so now all the rest of the transactions for the year aren't there. So that's also a change of operations, because we zeroed the accounts out. So those need to be adopted tonight as well.
And that's good news, because...
Saved us a lot of money, and it put additional, like $102,35,000 that was going to the sinking and reserve funds, straight to the general fund.
Could I ask some questions about this? It seems funny that when a percentage works in administration's favor, it's gone, but when it works against me and the police department, it works against me.
Since I've been in office, prior to this past year, all the elected officials' salaries and salary expenses came out of general budget, general government. So this year, they decided to put my salary and my salary expenses in the police budget. Then they, last year, there's one light meter for all of City Hall and the police department, means you're open 24/7, I pay 40% of the electric bill. And I keep getting all these expenses put on me, so consequently, that drives up the percentage of the overall budget that I'm supposedly getting. Percentage-wise, yeah, I'm getting more money. Dollar-wise, I might get a penny more than what I had before. But the council, I mean, the administration comes and says, well, the police department's not getting 35% of the budget. We're not getting 35% of the budget. We haven't had an increase in funds, we have increases in bills, or bills or expenses and the funding, so it hasn't been an increase in money to us. Then let me ask you, y'all were just saying that you want to do a change in a 2015 audit? Were y'all saying y'all can make an amendment to the 2015 audit?
I didn't say that.
No.
I'm sorry, you just said that there was an error in the 2015 audit that you want to bring forward.
That's not what I said.
Okay, would you explain it then, please?
The 2015 financial statements have the ending fund balance. That ending fund balance is different than what we had as the beginning fund balance for 2016, because when we started the 2016 budget, I had to take based upon what our estimate was. But the auditors come through, they do their thing, we closed out the year end, the numbers differ, so we have to change our beginning number for 2016 to reflect actuality for 2015.
Actuality, or what y'all think it is? It's not what, it's not what it ended when, when the auditor did the audit, is that correct? Is that what you're saying?
I don't know.
I don't understand what you're saying.
You're saying the audit, you hit, what numbers are you changing in 2015 audit?
I'm not changing any numbers in 2015, I'm making...
You just said you want to make an adjustment.
No.
No.
In 2016, beginning...
As a result of the audit, is that correct?
Right. The 2016 beginning fund balance was an estimate. The 2016 beginning fund balance now needs to reflect what the actual 2015 number was.
What the report said, the audit report.
Because it's a roll forward number, like a checking balance book.
Because what happened in 2015, they gave me the insurance liability expense without the revenue, so that made me $55,000 over budget, when I actually think I was a considerable amount of under budget, but that's going to be addressed at a later date, we're working on it now. Then we go talking about, you want to make this a budget amendment. I asked the council not to touch my 2016 budget. The year is not out, you know, the mayor says, well, put it back in. Well, pigs will fly before they put money back in after it's taken out, guarantee you It's strange that there was more money put in my liability, I think it's money that's being hidden in my budget to take out and put back in the general fund, that's what I believe. That extra money was put in my budget and a couple other budgets that I've looked at, to where at the end of the year, now they want to move it back to general fund, it was a surplus. I'm asking, you don't touch my 16 budget until the year's out. That's one. The second thing, we have fin, we have a software system called ENCODE, and that's the financials. So the police department, we have access to the police department, what our operating budget is. I try to track it. Ms. Lulu came in the beginning of the year, and the first part of the year, she was tied up with the auditors. Then after that, she was tied up with the DEQ loan. So the first set of financials I got for the police department in October this year went through July of 2016. I don't know what's so hard about, if you have a checkbook, you make $2,000 a month, it's in your checkbook, you pay a $500 house note, then you go down to $1,500 car note, a hundred, then it goes down to 14. I have, and I've been told by the administration, we have no idea where you are financially. Don't look at any of the numbers that are in there, they are wrong. But the mayor and the city auditor, I mean, the city finance director can analyze the police department budget and saying, we got X amount of dollars over, I mean, under, and they want to take it out. I just don't understand. It's, pardon? No, I mean, you said you, you and Linda have gone through my budget, the last meeting, saying that we want to take out $60,000. My secretary, who is well-versed on my budget, says it's more like $89,000 that y'all want to remove by this budget amendment out of my budget. I'm asking the council not to vote for moving one penny out of the police department budget for 2016. Let me finish the year. In November, I had four police cars, their transmissions went out.
The, the insurance liability line item?
It's in my budget. I didn't put it there, y'all put it there. So now y'all want to take it out and put it in general fund.
But we're not going to give you $101,000 worth of expense, and by taking the excess out that should not have been given to you as an expense anyway for 2016, you'll be hurting other people, like the senior center and the court, who has zero right now for the insurance expense, so if we don't take some...
When y'all, when y'all presented it and had it pass, it wasn't a problem. Now, at the end of the year, oh, you got 50, $60,000 under, we want to take your money away from you.
Chief.
Let me finish the year.
Chief, that's what we, I explained, is that when we originally put the budget in, Ms. Lulu came in without a budget in place in January. She created the budget, she based it on the past experience with Postal Weight. Postal Weight unfairly divvied out the insurance liability. They overcharged the police department. The mayor proposed budget amendments for the 15 budget that would have given that money to the police department. The police department, there were two budget amendments that I put forward that did not receive a second. Because those seconds did not happen, and the vote did not occur, the police department was denied 55, I forget what the number is, I think it was 55,000. So it wasn't the administration that hurt the police department, it was a lack of a second and a lack of a vote giving that money, authorizing, allocating that money to the police department. At every turn, this administration tried to get that money to you. You didn't ask for the money, we saw that there was...
I didn't ask for the expense either.
Wait, wait, we saw that there was a need. We also saw that in 14, prior to me taking office, that Postal Weight unfairly did that to the departments, and you being an elected police chief gets this on your, on the audit as an audit finding. It was clearly unfair. So in order for that not to happen, because the 2015 budget needed those allocations, you needed those funds, we put up an amendment that did not get seconded. I clearly recall, I begged three times before we passed it up for this council to second it, because without the second, we could not even discuss it, nor at any moment did you as the police chief speak up in that meeting to say, please second the motion, because there's 30...
But it wasn't just moving money for the police department, it was moving money for other departments, or I wanted to do your billing for you, it was other departments too.
It was your, right.
Not just me, it was, it's not my responsibility for other budgets.
So you're not helping the other departments? Y'all were all in the same boat?
Everyone was in the same boat.
It's not my responsibility for the other departments. All I'm asking is 2016 budget, leave it in place, don't touch the police department, let us finish the year, and if something went over, the city gets it. Thank you.
But those budgets have to be changed. If we know that something costs $10, we shouldn't be budgeting, we had the actual bill and the cost, chief, and I, like I said, I was astonished on two budget amendments that I put forth to help the, the police department, $55,000 was overlooked, and...
There were other departments on there too. That's not my responsibility to pay us ordinances for other...
But you didn't speak up for...
But it was all in one, it was all in one amendment, correct?
So should, uh...
Wait, wait, my question, was it all in one amendment?
Wait, wait, can I...
Yes, it is.
Wait, can I say?
Was it all in one amendment? Other departments besides the police department?
The amendment was, wait, the amendment was for the insurance liability, so would, I don't understand, what, I don't understand, okay. I don't, I, I don't...
You're blaming me for not getting it passed, it's not my responsibility.
I didn't blame you, did you?
Okay.
I didn't.
All I'm asking, council, please don't respect my 2016 budget. Do you want more of that money from other departments, if you have it? Please, I'm sorry, please.
Okay. I, I feel like I fought for the police department, Ms. Lulu fought for the police department, in order to put up amendments to give the police department, and yes, other, and...
Since 2015, I had no idea where my budget is at, because nothing is up present.
Chief.
So how can, how can you know where I'm at, when I can't find out from the figures from City Hall?
Chief, some of the numbers, wait, can I explain?
I can look at black and white, now we pull a, we pull a financial sheet on a regular basis, and then, y'all sold us, don't look at them, because they all wrong, okay?
And I gave, I gave, no, I did not say they're all wrong, I said, there are going to be, there are going to be some numbers, I told you, to separate the budget and look at it in two pieces, especially, that you look at the items on the top, and then you separate the items that all pertain to wages. There are things, can I...
The software program, you put the monies in, and if you pay expenses for the police department, they would have actually taken out, but whatever the bottom line is, that's what you have left. That's, that's kind of hard, it seems, huh? It seems real simple to be done. I know it's maybe a corporation, but thousands of employees don't have a problem that we have here, it just doesn't make any sense.
We are on a, we're not on a cash basis, we're on a accrual basis. We have to do journal entries, so journal entries hit differently.
Why do you have to be aware when you pay something, or not, we didn't take it out that particular budget? What's the thought about that?
Our ENCODE software system, we're not set up to have full automation, we just haven't bought the updates to do it. Chief, we're doing everything we can in getting it as hot, as much as we can. The items...
You know where I'm at, I don't know where I'm at, and I can't find out where I'm at.
The items...
I'm asking the council not to take any money out of my 2016 budget, carry on.
2016 was the first year that anybody even tried to give insurance expense to the departments. 2014 and 2015, the auditors just did a weird arbitrary percentage allocation, 80,000 went to the police for the 2014, and 35, 31,000 went to them for 2015. So 2016, based upon Postal Weight's methodology, I allocated $101,000 to the police department. During the audit, I said, this is stupid, we have actual policies, why is the police, why is regulatory, why is recreation paying for a portion of the fire trucks liability insurance? Why are they paying a portion of the police insurances?
For the tractor at the playground.
And the tractor was being allocated out too, because they wasn't looked at. So I allocated out the insurance based upon the vehicles to the appropriate departments, it's not that hard to look at. The rest is the general umbrella liability insurance for all of the buildings and properties that we own, is based on a percentage of square footage. I took this percentage of square footage, times it by the amount of the policy, and allocated that out to the other departments. Doing that gives quite a large difference between the original budget per department Postal Weight's way versus a real way, and I'm trying to make it equitable for everybody, so no one gets dinged on the audit.
We, we thought it was grossly unfair that we even contacted the legislative auditor, and there are emails that have been copied to you saying, how is it, how is it...
The middle of the year, 16 days left in the year.
How, but we stated, how is it that you can make an entry on one side and not give the expense?
They didn't want to give them.
And that's why, because they did it, chief, we put up a budget amendment to handle the insurance liability, and that was not seconded. That's why it got, that's why it ended up the way it did.
And this insurance line item, no department...
We were trying to try, protect and correct what the one-sided entry.
No department is putting a purchase order in for something that's going to go to the insurance expense.
Right.
The City Hall, generalized, general fund pays for the insurance expense for everybody. So taking it out of that one line item is not affecting you for any of the line items.
Well, we, we're actually, this should be...
Will you don't talk to my 2015 budget? Can you raise out and see what we have?
Do I have a motion to open a public hearing? I have a motion, my councilman John stands, seconded by councilman Benton, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays, it's open to public hearing. Can you give us a moment to get our little timer? Okay.
Thank you.
Eric Chaddeling, 700 Colonial Club Drive. I have two kids. My son saves all his candy, my daughter eats all of hers. At the end of the day, I tell my son, you have to share the rest of your candy with your sister. It's not right. It's not right. And if you're going to take this money from the police chief, same thing I'm saying. He does his job to save his money, and now we're going to pull it from him. I know people who personally donated money and bought bulletproof vests. I believe the council took that out of his budget, because he didn't have to pay for them. I don't know if I'm right, that's the way I think it came up at a meeting. You took the money that was given to him to free up his money for his extra expenses, and y'all took that out of his line item. I believe that was said at one of the meetings. I'm going to go back and look, but I believe, I believe it was said at one of the meetings.
You can.
Chief, do you recall anything like that?
As I said before, bulletproof vests have a five-year life expectancy. And in the last two, two and a half years, I've probably had citizens like yourself and vendors probably bought, mostly 20 vests apart, at least, because they keep recyc, not recycling, keep going out of the declaration date. We didn't have the money for that, and people like yourself and vendors in the area in the last couple of years have bought about 20 vests for us. I don't think any money was taken out of our budget, but we didn't have the money to allocate.
Okay, now you have money there, if we wouldn't have spent the money for the bulletproof vest, you would have had to spend it.
Correct, yeah.
That'd be less money in your budget.
Correct, that's right.
That's why we're not donating any more money. I mean, it's, it's simple, I mean, so he has extra money, and we donated money, now you want to pull it away from him, because he has extra money. If people wouldn't have donated the money for the bulletproof vest, that $6,000 would have less in his budget, that you're taking away from him now. That's the way I understand it. You can shake your head, you don't understand that, that's the way I understand it.
I agree, that's the way you understand it.
Okay? Because the money's, he didn't spend the money, someone else spent the money, so he don't have to spend it. So you're going to take that back. Doesn't make sense to me.
You got any candy? Want to get some candy?
This is a new topic for me. Kind of funny. I noticed, it was soon as you guys started talking about the budget, and the chief got up there and started speaking about how, basically, you're taking money away from...
Oh, I didn't, sorry.
I know I didn't have three minutes, come on. Come on.
That's a very quick three minutes.
That was real fast.
Fine, let me start that. Okay.
Thank you. I noticed very quickly that if he has a line item, for let's, I'm going to make up numbers for a second, $500,000, and he manages to figure out a way to get an insurance policy or something else for only 10 grand, that's $490,000 of gap, that in my industry, he not only gets to keep, he gets a bonus for that, because that extra money, that contingency, he gets to roll into other things for his particular department. That's a good thing. So if you guys assigned a line item of $500,000, 110, I think I heard, 110,000, he came in at $38,000, by God, you owe him a, a round of applause, because he did something fantastic. You shouldn't, not only should you not take his money to allocate to other departments, you should say, thank you, and how did you do it? That's it, thank you.
TommyBuddy728, Stone Lee Drive. A couple of just general comments. Having sat through, as a CFO, hundreds of budget meetings, this is probably not the forum for y'all to be deciding this, this should have been done off-camera, and I don't mean that because we have a camera, just as a term, and, and what it, I guess what keeps coming home to me is, having come to these meetings for the last six or eight months, is that there's a lack of trust amongst our leaders, and, and that trust has a huge cost to each of you individually and to the city. If this was running smoothly, the chief, the finance advisor, the mayor, and a couple of councilmen, so you're not breaking any sunshine laws, would have sat down around a conference table, and if it took six meetings over two months, and you'd have figured this out, and, and it gets back to a lack of trust. And I won't go into the reasons why there's a lack of trust. There's a book out there called The Speed of Trust by Stephen Covey, it's a great book, and it, and it describes the cost when there's a lack of trust, and it, it infers how smooth things run and the benefit from trust. I'll be happy to buy anybody a copy and donate it to you, if you're interested. It's a great read, it opened my eyes, I read it years ago, it gives you a whole different perspective. I'll, I'll buy seven or eight copies, and I'll deliver them. I'll pay for them. But, but this lack of trust, and I'm not pointing fingers at reasons or causes, is costing the city money... is costing the city money, and it's, and it's creating grief and stress that's not necessary. So if you can overcome these trust issues, and if you can communicate, we're all gonna be better. It doesn't mean you're always gonna agree. We're all gonna be better served.
Thank you very much. I appreciate your comment.
Rena Sanders, Oak Avenue.
Okay, just give me a second. I'll get to the timer again. Okay, Ms. Sanders.
Did I hear the chief say that in October, you got your first run through July of 2016?
Correct.
When, did y'all get the same thing?
We get very little runs.
How are y'all supposed to know what's going on with your budget? And I hear someone say, you know, oh, Ms. Lulu, "It's dumb, the way things were being done." Well, we became a city in 1953. I was so proud of the fact that I learned from the likes of Barbara Butera, Carlo Ferrara, Paul Johnston, Benny Mosca. And all of these years, the accounting's been good, the accounting's been across the board. And to have someone come in and say that the way things were done previously were dumb, I just find it hard to believe that you can make this determination in this short period of time when we've had college-educated people that have worked here before, that worked on all the same numbers that y'all are working on, and now you find it dumb. I don't agree.
I will, do I have a motion to close to address the council? I have a motion by councilman Johnston, seconded by councilman Bodie, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Council discussion?
Yeah, I got a little discussion. For the past, at least, I know it's been, probably two meetings already this has come up. And every time, you at least have three council members say that they will not pull any money from the chief. But yet, y'all still bring this up to try and push it through. I understand you have to make amendments on things that weren't on there originally. But it would've been smart to take off the police situation and try and work the numbers elsewhere when at least three council members, I know councilman Will and myself, I believe, and Tim Bodie have said it also at the meeting, that we are not gonna pull any money from the police. I understand what you're saying, that it might not have been, is supposed to have been there, but it was there. And he's going through his budget, and he's seeing where he has leftover money. That's it. If they have money there, and it's extra, he thinks that I can probably move it here later on something that he needs. He's looking at the budget as a whole, not just one line. So to pull from that line, saying that you weren't using it, or you weren't supposed to use it, that's, I mean, I don't know. That's, like I said, I'm not gonna be voting for this.
Well, I didn't change any numbers on the budget, because this is what's been advertised to the public. So I, I didn't feel that I could change anything, so we have to go through the whole advertising process again. Y'all would have to say, "Not this line, not this line," or, you know, conversely, "Just these lines."
Okay. And also, like the gentleman just got up and spoke, maybe we should've been in the back room discussing this beforehand, rather than coming here and doing all this in public, saying that we're not gonna do this, because we've been telling, for at least a month, at least a month, we've been saying, "We're not gonna make these amendments." So, that's it.
Well, Chief, and like I've said before, I don't know how they can take funds away from you, and you not finish your calendar year with the expenses that are forecasted. So as I will say again, I will not be voting for these amendments either. Your budget will stay the same.
Great job, chief.
The budget, if it was easy, I, I only wish. It's not easy. The budget in its prior form, when I came into office, was not by the accepted form for the legislative auditor, the local government budget act, the accounting principles, et cetera. For the first time, for Harahan, the budget is in appropriate form.
Was the city ever cited for this?
Excuse me. So the city, the budget was never in the form that is accepted by governmental practices and by the associations that run this. The other problem is that we did have problems with budgets, and it wasn't handled well. Budgets were not even passed. I walked into office, and there wasn't a budget in place. So all the money that they spent on accounting and all the attention that should've gone to putting a budget in place was neglected. They inherited in the last administration a million-dollar surplus. And they took it to a one-and-a-quarter-million-dollar deficit. So something wasn't happening correctly. Also, not all departments are self-funded and fund themselves on their own. The general fund is the operating fund. Through that fund, all the departments are funded, except for a few exceptions. The police department is one. I hope none of us judge what to give a department by money that they receive in any type of revenue, but out of real need. And that's what we look at. We are, we took a city that was on the road to financial ruin and bankruptcy, and brought it back. And now we're respected. We're so respected that even with that one-and-a-quarter-million-dollar deficit, we applied so much money that the bond commission then decided we were worthy to refinance a loan. That created one of our changes in operations that need to be addressed tonight. It puts more money in the departments, for the chief, for the fire, for everyone. So no, things weren't handled as they, I wish they were. And it's been hard for the police chief and I, and all the departments, because we've suffered the brunt of that overspending, that two-and-a-quarter-million dollars. When you don't adopt a budget, and you don't have one coming into the year, it takes months to develop that. Ms. Linda Lulu came in, in the middle of Bedlam. We didn't have a city attorney, and we didn't have a CPA for a couple of months. She bravely walked in here, created the budget, and then we had trouble getting it passed. Only when we were at crisis did that budget pass. Because you're not, you cannot spend past a certain amount, fifty percent of the prior year. Then, we were thrust into an audit that started a month early. They questioned us about going back to all the way 2012 to find things, to correct old finances. We did it. And then, we had to face and do the hard work of the DEQ loan that should've been done in 2013. Had those, those budgets been passed, had the DEQ been addressed, if the budget had been in appropriate accounting form, my goodness, we would've walked into a much better situation. Because you can't do financials and get all that on a regular basis in a deficit when staff has been cut. My predecessors had a lot more staff in the budgeting office. One predecessor had three assistants and the CPA. I have the CPA. I'm very proud of what we've done. We've done more with less. Now it's up to this council. I'm not saying I'm over the fisk. I present what I think is fiscally responsible to move the city forward. I have that obligation to all the residents in the city. At that point, the baton gets passed. It gets passed to the council. They can amend, they can accept any line item that they so wish. We don't have to fight and argue about it. We can discuss it, and then we can move through the line items maturely and go through it. But those are the facts about what the budget situation was. Should we pass a budget this, tonight, for 2017, it'll be quite an accomplishment. It's been a finding on the city audit for quite some time, and it'll come out. It'll come off of that audit, because we'll have cleared that. Having the, the 2017 budget in place for January is huge. Because then, instead of creating a budget, arguing over a budget, et cetera, we're just working on financials, and we're working on the audit. And we've already taken care of the SUE or the DEQ loan, which was quite an undertaking. We can't waste any more of the time of our colleagues, of our residents, and do this anymore. It costs too much money, because the more that there is argument and dissension, and the longer it takes to adopt a budget, the less money we have for other things, and the less time and attention. We have a very small staff who've done an exceptional job. I'm proud of our police department. I'm proud of our fire department, our maintenance department. I'm proud of Ms. Lulu for bringing, help bringing us off of the brink of financial collapse. So I think we just proceed, go through the lines. Ms. Lulu has also created a smaller packet that she has ready on the most crucial line item for the sixteen budget that has to be addressed, that we would like the council to take. It's just a miniature version of what you have.
Just like I said, it's, we had plenty of time to do this. We had plenty of time to get together. You knew this wasn't gonna pass, because we weren't, we at least had three councilmen get up here and say, "They're not gonna make it." So we had a whole month, at least, to sit down and go over these amendments. And now you wanna try and-
I say we call for the vote.
Call for the vote.
Wait, wait. Can you please give me the-
You kinda hit the nail on the head about trust. When we met with Ms. Lulu, my staff and myself, because I don't claim to know it all, and I've got a staff that works very diligently with us, with me on my budget, one of the things we noticed, was brought to our attention, allocated overhead. Looking at it, I paid thirty-five percent of the mayor's salary, thirty-five percent of two employees at city hall, and fifty percent of the HR director. It totaled about fifty-seven thousand dollars. The other thousand dollars, I got a policeman. When I questioned it, and the council wasn't aware of it, I sent an email out. I said, "Show me where, is this an accepted practice as a CPA? Is this mandatory by the legislative auditor? Show me in writing where this is law or rule." And the answer was, "We're not gonna do it this year. We're pulling it out. But when the new auditor comes in in 2017, we're gonna see if they wanna do it." So apparently, there's no rule, law, or accepted practice for doing this. It's a way to take money out of my budget, put more expenses on me, and give more money to the rest of the city. Elected police chief responsible for his budget, the mayor's responsible for the rest of the city budget.
Ms. Lulu?
And when you say "trust," that's what it's all about. Thank you.
Ms. Lulu, would you just speak to the allocated overhead?
First of all, we do not single out the police department. We gave allocated overhead to all departments. And that was based upon postal weights recommendation that we continue to see what overhead costs are that can be spread to other departments, because all departments benefit from the mayor, from the HR department, from the other administrative clerks up front who take the money in and who've cut the checks for the departments. We took this upon their recommendation. It is also done in other governmental entities, it is done in business world as well.
Did you send me documentation where I asked? No, the answer was, "If the new auditor wants to do it in seventeen, then we'll address it then." I asked for, "Show me some documentation where it's to be done. It's legal or whatever." And the answer was, "We're not doing it this year. We're taking it out. And we're gonna do it maybe in the future, if the seventeen budget, if the auditor requests it."
Well, the other auditor was quite adamant about it.
Well, why didn't you send me something in writing showing it? I asked specifically to show me where it was an accepted practice. And the answer was, "We're not gonna do it now that you questioned it, is what it was, and we'll do it in the future after the auditor."
Well, postal weight never did give me.
Well, how many really wanted it?
How do I know they wanted it? Because they told us.
Verbally or in writing?
Verbally. They tell us everything verbally.
Why wouldn't you ask them to do it in writing then? It wasn't ever done before.
They had our, I, I don't know exactly, you know, what we said. I, I think instead of, with all due respect, chief, I'm not trying to cut you off.
You are, in, in-
Well, I, I just wanted to interject, that's all, is that what we did not want to happen is that this be mandated, and then what happened with the insurance liability then hit all departments with these other things.
Mayor, I motion to call for the vote.
We, we-
I second it.
We trusted what postal weights said-
Mayor, I motion to call for the vote.
So that, that's why we said we're gonna withdraw it.
City attorney?
The only thing, when I questioned it, it was, "Well, we're not gonna do it."
She's the chair of the meeting.
Thank you. So what I did was, we said, "You know what, chief? We're gonna get a new audit. We're gonna get a new auditor, so we'll take that out, and we'll wait and see."
I'm sorry?
That's all. So, Ms. Lulu, would you-
City attorney?
Where's your, um, I would like to address the sewer fund, sales tax fund, the DEQ fund. I'd like a point of personal privilege to take up those funds that are mandated necessary by law for the two reasons that, that we shall amend when you're with, over the five percent, where there's a five percent change and a change in operations.
Right, and those will be findings if we do not amend those things. Forget all the other line items. If we do not-
If you don't amend anything else.
Fix the fact that we don't have a budget to begin with for the three DEQ funds. And that we do not change the budget for the two bond funds, because we refinanced the bonds, and now the funds are closed. That will be an audit finding, and it's not an audit finding on the management, it's an audit finding on the council. But that's just my two cents for you guys.
I did take a look at this. And the council's obligation to, to adopt budget amendments when they're presented by the budgeting authority, in this case, the mayor, who presents the budget, and who has the executive operating officers to tell you when there's something that needs to be changed. And here's what the revised statutes say. Thirty-three, thirteen-ten says that when you're presented with a change in operations, the governing authority shall adopt a budget amendment. And there's actually some case law on this. There've been, there's been litigation between mayors and, and city councils over this change in operations idea. And the courts have said that a change in operations is a factual determination by the trial court. A comprehen, and while we will not attempt, this is the First Circuit in 1985. While we will not attempt to define a comprehensive definition of what is meant by changes in operations, we suggest such things as curtailing, eliminating, or adding a particular service for the people would meet the criteria, as well adopting, as well as adopting additional revenue-producing measures to permit the enhancement of services for the people. This is a 1985 case, also cited in a nineteen, in a 2013 case brought against the city of New Orleans. So what I'm getting at is that the change in op, if you, if there's a demonstrated change in operations, you have a mandatory duty under the revised statutes to effect the change in the budget line item. When I talked to Ms. Lulu and the mayor earlier tonight, early this afternoon, I said, you know, you, you need to make this specific as to line items, so that you can see if it's a change in operations or a five percent change in revenue expenditures, or revenue, in revenue or expenditures, so that you know that you're meeting the statute, the requirements of the statute, and the council has to do it, because it's a- and the council has to do it because it's a sort of a technical amendment. So I leave it to her as to whether, you know, to explain the technicality of it. But that's what the courts have said. This is your obligation under law to actually effect this change. The way it was explained to me, because I had a lot of questions about it, is that your year-end number has to conform to your beginning number for the next year. So that you have to make sure that, you know, what happened in the mid-year is now going to be accurately reflected in the budget as the budget progresses. So we'll just, you know, whittle it down to, you know, four or five items to get that done. And I think that's what she's getting at with this DEQ thing.
Which is what I did. I just copied the same budget pages, and I did a green highlighter on the line items, which is not a whole heck of a lot. It's the overhead, the allocated overhead salaries to remove it from all the departments, the insurance...
We have to sit down and talk. I'm not voting on any of that tonight.
The beginning fund balance and those funds.
We can, we can. What I, since we've called for a special meeting on...
There's not going to be enough time, two days, there's not going to be enough time.
In order to adopt your '17 budget, you have to do the change in operations and the 5% rule. And there are funds, like the sewer fund, the sinking fund, and the DEQ funds, and the sales tax fund. It doesn't affect any other departments. It doesn't affect the chief, it doesn't affect fire, it doesn't affect administration, and we're taking out the allocated overhead as promised. So those are things that we must do in order to proceed.
Well, again, if you thought that this was going to be an issue where you actually came up with numbers to get by if we didn't want to vote with the police, then you knew we weren't going to vote with it because of the police.
No.
If you have revised numbers, already ready, at the ready right now, that if we didn't vote on this whole issue, you had a couple of issues on there that you needed passed. So you knew we weren't going to vote on it because of the police.
Two months ago, I told you guys that we needed to have the three DEQs and the two bond funds amended, and the sewer fund because of the change of operations, because we changed the sewer rates.
You set it up the last meeting, too.
Yeah, whatever the last meeting was that I was here, because I know I missed a couple. Mr. Bures, this evening, about 45 minutes before the meeting started, he recommended that I highlight just those individual line items, and that was what I did.
What is the bare minimum? What is the absolute bare minimum that we need to amend for '16? And at his suggestion, we tried to make it simpler and ran it off at the last, right before the meeting, so that the council felt that we gave the information so that you can comply with the law and to make it a little bit easier and easier to read. It is, it is those funds, it doesn't affect any line items for the police, for the fire, for anything else, for maintenance, for, um, how, you know...
Court, any of them, it doesn't affect anybody else.
For court, regulatory, nothing. It's only those that have the "shall" in the law.
You know, from, from what I understand, especially with the DEQ and the sewer funds, that, that's really a technical amendment. Look, when I looked at the original...
I need to sit down and see all the numbers.
I looked at the original ordinance and said, "What the hell is going on here?"
It's the same numbers, though. It's the same numbers, Craig. There's no change, except if, pull those numbers out and just amend that. Because it's the same numbers that were advertised and given, the same exact numbers.
If y'all want to push it off, y'all could push it off. I'm not voting on it tonight. They have three other council members up here, you can do whatever, but I'm not voting for it.
Well, I mean, you're looking at me like I have something to say about it, but you know, the, the, these disputes, and I was surprised at the number of cases on this, on this issue, but these disputes, when they wind up in court, it's, you know, it's the mayor suing the council, you know, which is, of course, counterproductive.
I'm not saying it's never going to get done. I'm saying, doing it at the last minute, trying to get these all, it's, I need to sit down and talk. Like I said, if y'all want to push this off. If you look for a vote tonight, I'm not voting for it tonight.
Got you.
Okay, so we had the ordinance seconded.
So let's call for the vote.
Can we call for, well, if we don't, then we've got advertisement issues. So I'd like to have a motion to, I would like to put this ordinance on for the 19th, when we're meeting again. So I think we should defer.
How's that enough time?
Because it has to be done by...
How is that enough time to meet?
It's the same numbers. We can meet.
Yeah, I prefer to meet.
But we're going to have problems adopting the '17 budget if y'all, if this isn't done. So I'd like to have a motion to put it on for the 19th.
I'll make a motion, but it's probably not going to second it.
I have a motion to move this ordinance vote for December 19th, special meeting. Do I have a second? The worst thing is that you postponed it again. Do I have a second?
Why can't we vote on it now?
Because if it doesn't pass and we have these necessary things in order to do the 2017 budget, you're going to not have a budget that accurately reflects what you needed to reflect.
But we said we would have a budget. Did we just say that? We will have a budget in place.
But the '17 budget, I, you have to have this, am I right? The sewer, the DEQ, and the sinking fund?
So you're saying that needs to be in place for '16, for '17? I'm asking.
I'm asking.
Okay. So if I'm not mistaken, we implemented the '16 budget in June of 2016, right?
Because the ending fund balance.
So, so I don't ever recall this situation being brought up in the end of '15 for '16.
It wa, it was brought up, and that budget amendment in the end of '15 was not seconded. I'm just trying to caution.
And we are required to have the '17, the '17 budget is required by law to be put into place by December 31st. We haven't ever met that law.
It would be nice if at least we could defer so that it can at least be brought up again on the 19th.
I'm not voting for it, so I'm ready to call for the vote.
All right.
Set that 20 minutes ago.
Then we will proceed with the vote for the budget amendment for 2016 in total. All in favor of the budget amendment?
Yea.
All opposed?
Nay.
We have one yea, three nays, and the budget amendment sales. No, you have, we have to start all over. So what I'd like to do is to put, Ms. Lulu, would this be okay, to put a, the proposed '16, um...
Seventeen?
No, for 2016, for first reading on the 19th? Or is that doable?
I don't think so, because you know the advertising laws.
Yes or no?
It's going back up for adoption. It'd have to be advertising again.
Again, all over.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you.
Madam Clerk, the next ordinance.
Proposed ordinance number 2016-22. The following ordinance was proposed unanimously by the Council of the City of Harahan, an ordinance adopting the annual budget of revenue and expenditures for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2017, for the city of Harahan.
Do I have a motion to open the public hearing? I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by...
Clerk.
Councilman Johnston, all in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Motion passes. We're open to public hearing. Anybody wishing to come and speak? If there's no one wishing to come and speak to the 2017 budget, do I have a motion to close the public hearing?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Baudier, to close the public hearing. Counsel discussion.
A lot of these numbers, I've been working with Councilman Wheeler, trying to get some numbers together, and we're just going to have too many amendments on here. So I think that I'm, I'm personally going to probably vote it down and bring a reintroduction in January with the revised numbers.
The mayor presents the budget, so you have to amend it. So it's going to be the same budget?
Okay.
Considering the number of amendments then?
Right.
Maybe do we, I think we're going to be here. Do we defer until January?
We can't, we will not meet state law. And the budget will not change.
Because the list of our amendments are pretty lengthy.
Yes.
You've had two months, why have I not received anything? I could have put these in, we could have had it ready to roll. We have been work, we literally have been working on this since then. And also, when we email questions and we just get answers today, it kind of makes it difficult for us to submit our amendments.
Budget's been advertised, and it's been up for two months.
And I've sent questions, and I'm not the only council member up here that has sent questions, and my questions got answered today at 3:30. If I would have had the information that I had asked for, it might have made it a little bit easier. We're running the numbers.
You asked for salary information, which was given.
Right, but I believe there was some other questions of the institute.
There was five questions from Mr. Johnson, which were also actually in the speech that I gave in October.
We have a list of amendments, it's quite lengthy.
So can we go through them and pass a budget? To meet state law? Let's roll, we got time.
I'm not ready to do all the amendments right now, because we still have a couple of things that we're working on. So if you want us to keep this, we can defer it.
You want to defer it till the 19th? Do I have a motion to defer this budget for 2016 to the December 19th special meeting? I have a motion by Councilman Benton. Do I have a second?
My motion to put it on the January meeting, defer it to January meeting.
So state law and budgets, it's okay just not to meet that again?
I prefer not to, but four days to finish up the amendments that we need to do, I don't think that's sufficient time.
Man, don't we have till June 13, June 30th?
No.
No.
Uh, city attorney, Bures, what the law states about passing a budget, what the date is?
State law does say that you should pass the budget prior to the commencement of your fiscal year, but it also makes provisions that, you know, there's sort of an emergency backstop that you just spend as you did the last year and...
Up to six months.
Right, you could project what you did for the previous year to start 2017.
So, I mean, this isn't the first time that the city of Harahan has been in this situation. It was just, it was this way. I think that eventually it winds up where it affects your bond rating, and the legislative auditor comes looking at what y'all are up to, but, you know, I'm sure you can get this done by January, right, counsel?
We'll do our best.
But, you know, the, the way that state law is written, it is, it is written to accept, you know, to, to provide for an emergency backstop in case you don't pass the budget.
Craig, last year, I remember you were adamant that we had to do it.
I am. I'm adamant still, but...
No, that we had to pass it before the 31st.
And we did that without a CPA on board, a finance admin.
So would you like that this change in...
Because I'm still working on amendments, that's why. I want to make sure that the fire, I mean, fire and the police are taken care of, and we have to make a couple more amendments to make that happen.
Here's, here's just a suggestion. Why, why doesn't the council decide to form a budget subcommittee? And that way, you'll have a couple of members who are in on the budget process and then can report back to the council in sufficient time to get these budgets done before December That way, nobody can complain that, "Well, nobody talked to me," or "I didn't get this answer in time," or... It requires the council persons on that committee to devote more time to the city so that, that they're in the loop. But it will prevent this next year, where you won't have this situation where, you know, you're coming up at the last minute.
I have no problem with that. It's, in the past, we've done this, and we say what we want, we say, do, you know, this is what we want, we try to get involved with this conversation. But what we suggest isn't taken. So we've tried that before. When we first came in office, we tried that, trying to do it the proper way, sitting down...
You mean a couple of years ago?
Discussing everything, yeah. Discussing everything, and we were bringing up ideas or suggestions, and it was never followed. Or it was never, so that's why...
Okay. Well, I, I thought I was coming up with a brand-new brilliant idea. It's the way they do it in other municipalities. And, and, but I think you should try to make it work again. You know, there was a period of time where you didn't have a financial expert, you didn't have a city attorney, and so things kind of got off the rails. And I can appreciate Ms. Lulu having to go back and do a lot of work to correct the errors of the past. And frankly, when I, you know, when I got here, I looked at the budgets that had been passed in the, before, and I was mystified as to how y'all were operating. I mean, they, you know, they looked like, they were written on a cocktail napkin. You know, now you've got something that looks like a professional piece of work. And, you know, and it's, it's more laborious to go through it, but, you know, now it's, it's starting to look like something that...
Looks good.
Like municipalities are supposed to do. So maybe you should give another shot. Now that you've got a little bit more transparency with the way these numbers are, I know the chief of police doesn't agree with that, but the accounting software is there, and the budget ordinance, that 2016 thing that was presented to you last ni, uh, this, tonight, you know, is a line item budget. I mean, you've now got something that looks like a municipal budget, and it's something that you can work with. Just a suggestion for the future.
And I want to just caution, I don't want to get, I really do want to promote where we have budgets in place when we're supposed to, and that we're not spending our time, wasting our time and our resources and our attention to just budget, 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 because then we create the same cycle that the chief is here upset about, I'm upset about, Ms. Lulu's upset about, and the council. Because you're not going to be able to update those numbers until we have a budget. That's what we're, that's what we're so desperate to have. And I think a lot of the angst and a lot of the discord dissipates once we have, we're doing amendments on a regular basis and we pass budgets before the end of the year. It never, it never means, just because a budget is passed, we have amended that budget several times to increase line items, correct? For the police and for other items. So amendments are something we've done, and we should do. So when you amend the budget, you amend up on some items, you amend down on some items, and you adjust, and you also amend for the 5% rule and a change in operations. I really, you know, I respect everyone's want to have the most accurate numbers, but we have to remember, we're working with a small staff, and we're trying very hard to get the information to you that you need.
We rarely get that information.
And, and the more, and the more we postpone adopting a budget, the later you're going to get your monthly numbers.
Mayor, can I say something? I think a lot of the disdain and the discourse starts that every time we get into a budget discussion, you basically bring up how every administration in the past has done it wrong, has destroyed it, has made a mess out of it. Well, I was part of those past administrations, and I don't ever remember getting in trouble for anything, not to mention the fact that you talk about the overspending on... for anything, not to mention the fact that you talk about the overspending on a prior administration, which I was on, but fail to forget that we had to endure two major storms and a sinkhole that almost an entire block fell into. Not, and on top of that, she never remembers, she always remembers to forget that on that administration's way out, they did make a lawsuit to BP, and we got another six hundred and forty thousand that comes in and makes her numbers look good. That's getting forgot about.
That's been how much we got.
And as far as, but the count, as far as the count, wherever the number is, it was four hundred plus, uh, in the account practices, I remember our accountants were budgeted like thirty-eight, forty-eight thousand, and what are we gonna pay an accountant this year? Over a hundred and twenty thousand? Yeah. So I'm, I'm, I'm trying to, well, we did it with an accountant, three members, that was like thirty-eight to forty thousand, but now we got one lady that's over a hundred and twenty thousand?
We're not gonna be counting from those.
So then, then on top of that, you got Save Harahan, who comes up there and just removes every bit of trust, every, and just puts hate and hate and hate on top of hate, and then comes to these council meetings and spends this, "Mayor, you, you, you built this recipe, you built this tumor, don't, uh, this, uh, don't doom." And yet y'all come in, y'all, "Man, I'm just so tired of hearing you start every budget meeting about how the, the past has done it so wrong. Tired of hearing it, and you never say anything that good."
And Councilman Baudier, I know that this is hard, it's not, it's not meant, uh, other than to present facts, and I know that you sat on the prior council.
But when you present facts, then present the facts.
But the facts are the facts.
It's not true facts, they left one point two, I believe, in capital funds. They were pulling money from the wrong area, they were using it in general funds rather than pulling from capital like they should have been. That's why it was so much left in capital and so little in the general.
And the, I don't want any more discord. If this council wants to defer...
And I wouldn't even know it, but I, I can see the numbers.
If this council wants to defer the two thousand and seventeen budget to January, so be it. It will be in management's response to the legislative auditor. I will also submit a letter, an email letter, to the legislative auditor telling them about the transactions of tonight. So do I have a...
In two thousand and seventeen, I can guarantee you, as soon as we don't agree with one of her line item numbers, that she will bring up what the past administrations have done.
Do I have a motion to defer this ordinance for the two thousand and seventeen budget to the January regular scheduled meeting?
I already did a motion.
What day is that? So I have a motion to defer the ordinance adopting the two thousand and seventeen budget to January nineteenth at seven-thirty. Do I have a second? By Councilman Johnston, do I have a second? Councilman Wheeler, all in favor?
Nay.
Any opposed?
Nay.
I have three yays, one nay, motion passes. Where are we on?
Ordinances for introduction, there, there are none. No old business, new business number one, two thousand and seventeen holidays.
I believe everyone received a list of the holidays. Do I have a motion to adopt the holidays?
Motion.
As listed. I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by Councilman Baudier, all in favor?
Nay.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. The holidays are adopted.
New business number two, the five hundred block of Gordon Avenue is requesting permission to hold their annual New Year's Eve block party from eight P.M. until one A.M. The street will need to be blocked off from Sixth Street to Wilson.
Chief Walker, have officers been assigned?
Have been hired, yes.
Okay. Do I have a motion to grant permission?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by?
Second.
Councilman Baudier. All in favor?
Yes.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays. Permission is granted.
New business number three, high content ABO application for Dollar General, number one-one-seven-five-one, located at seventy-three thirty-five Jefferson Highway.
Chief, have all the applications been approved and the State Department?
Yes, just waiting on the police records, check approval, but other than that, it's fine.
Do I have a motion to grant the ABO?
Motion.
I have a motion by Councilman Johnston, seconded by? Councilman Baudier, all in favor?
Yeah.
Any opposed? We have four yays, zero nays, permission is granted. We now have addressed the council, if anyone would like to come up and address the council. If there's no one wishing to address the council, we will now close the, address the council, secretary's report.
Secretary's report for November, total revenue, four hundred and forty-seven thousand, one hundred and fifty-four dollars and eleven cents.
Report, Chief Walker.
The stats for Harahan Police Department for the month of Novem, November two thousand and sixteen. There were seven hundred and sixty-one calls for service, we had fourteen accidents, one hundred and thirty-two tickets issued, for two hundred and thirteen charges, we had three patrol requests. Arrests for narcotics were twenty-three for thirty-five different charges, twenty-three were felonies, filed misdemeanors, seven city. We've seen an increase in heroin arrests in Harahan, not all, some are Harahan residents, some of us passing through on vehicle stops. Other arrests, ninety-four, charges, a hundred and eighty-seven charges for six felonies, a hundred and twenty-nine misdemeanors, sixteen city, and thirty-six traffic arrests. There were no murders this, this month, there were no rapes, no robberies, one residential burglary, no non-residential, non-residential burglaries, no attempted burglaries, we had one motor vehicle theft, we had one, no attempted motor vehicle thefts, six larceny thefts, and seven assaults. So, please follow us on our Facebook page, we can put out our weekly stats on our arrests, gives you an idea what's going on in the city. Wish y'all a Merry Christmas and a very safe and Happy New Year.
Thank you.
Councilman Johnston?
Just Merry Christmas, have a happy and safe New Year.
On September nineteenth, we received a letter from the mayor, it says, "I have asked Ed Kraus to assume the position of Chief Information Officer for the City of Harahan. In the business and the government world, the CIO is the executive in charge of all information systems, applications, infrastructure, business process, and I.T. personnel. Ed will work directly with all departments to resolve issues and plans for the I.T. expansion while overseeing any change that affects business. He will report directly to the mayor of Harahan. Ed has thirty-seven years of experience in I.T., business and programming management. His experience includes twenty-four years of consulting service and an executive position in overseeing clients in many industries, including homeland security. Most recently, he was the senior vice president of one of the largest global consulting and I.T. firms overseeing North American practices, approximately a hundred and eighty, I'm sorry, approximately eighteen hundred employees. He has, he has recently retired and offered his time pro bono to Harahan in this role. Please join me in welcoming Ed Kraus to the team." Okay, so on the news, it was on the news a couple days back, and I had wanted to get some information out to the public that there could've been a possible hacking of the, the city website. Mr. Kraus, two weeks prior to an email being opened by the mayor, had informed us, "Do not open estranged emails." And the mayor came in on Veterans Day and opened a strange email, and we don't know how far this city got hacked, we don't really know really what's going on, and we won't know, they do know there's holes in the firewall, they knew though that the hack was from someone in the Ukraine. And, but I guess, you know, I, I, out of most of it, Mr. Ed Kraus disagreed with the mayor on distributing this information out to the council, and before he was, he was released, or he was actually resigned. He resigned. So my thing, my, my question is, is that, you have this guy who comes in with all of this knowledge and with all of this praise, and man, within two months, he's gone? And so, Mr. Ed, I'm sorry, I gotta add you to the list of the fifteen people that's already been fired, released, forced out. It really sucks, because you really could've been an asset to this city, you know, and if you're the chief and you get on the bad side of the mayor chief, your budget's getting cut. That's just the way it is, brother. When you're on a council and you get on the bad side of the mayor, you better know Save Harahan's getting you tomorrow. So I'd like to wish everybody a very Merry Christmas, even Save Harahan, and a Happy New Year, be safe, thank y'all.
I was gonna speak, I had considered speaking about your television debut, but I've, but I've, but I, I, I will speak to it now. Information that was released, was released without my permission, and it was premature. And I would like to take a moment to apologize to the citizens of Harahan for the misinformation contained in the recent TV news report that may have caused alarm for our constituents. The news report falsely claimed the city's information had been hacked and personal information stolen. This malicious email event cited in the news was...
No one said personal information was stolen. No one said that. And it was a possibility of a hack.
This, this, point of order, I'm speaking, thank you.
Speak the truth.
This malicious email, this is, this malicious email event cited in the news was resolved immediately, within minutes of the city's I.T. consultants performing a malware scan on my laptop computer, and it had not been infected with the malware. The event was mischaracterized to counsel who misunderstood the process of a cursory follow-up with the FBI. The FBI agreed with our city's I.T. review that my laptop was not infected with any malware and that the laptop had no access to the city's data systems. Additionally, the FBI review noted the malicious email would not have been able to exploit my Apple laptop because the exploit was written to attack Windows operating system, not an Apple operating system. The FBI closed their review after conducting their own assessment and detailed discussion with our city's I.T. vendor consultant. Technology can be difficult to understand and explain, but we can all use this as a reminder to stay vigilant to the possible identity theft that can occur and stay vigilant as to what can happen on the computers. The FBI investigation was supplemental, and things that were contained in that investigation were perma, prematurely released and without my authorization.
Mayor, several days prior to me going on the news, I emailed you and said, "Mayor, please email the public." Now, I wanna know what makes the City of Harahan different than Starbucks, Home Depot, Russia? It could, it, it was just a, it was almost as if you had something to hide, and we don't really get it, just, hey, look, the city, somebody got into the city, we, we don't know what happened, just check your stuff. Check your stuff, because if it would've turned out bad, this, we wouldn't have a clean funding. Now, you got businesses that come here, that we, we're dying to get business here, but who's gonna come do business here if they're doing business with the city and all, and, and their citizens get hacked, but no one ever informs them? It's like we're purposely chasing people away. Is this transparency, you ran on transparency, what, what's so not transparent about just saying, "Hey, this might've happened"? That's what blew me away the most. And so now, you're still trying to say, "Hey, people make mistakes, man, we do." I opened up a thing, I shut a whole computer down. You know, I did it. But, but when you're the mayor, you step out and you say, "Hey, something might've happened." That's all I was asking, and I didn't, I did it, just so everyone knows, several days in advance, I asked, I sent the email to the mayor, "Mayor, you do not inform the public, I will." And then you were never informed.
Thank you. The information you received was inaccurate, incomplete, and it was...
No one's telling, man. You can tap on what, what you blatantly want.
That's not true.
It is true.
It's not true. Let's...
Let, let me get up and explain the situation, or?
No.
Why not?
Why not? Counsel, counsel.
Motion. I'm, I'm... This is the kind of information that is kept within the four walls of any organization and not made public. This, this to me seems to be one of the most bizarre things I have ever seen at any level of government enterprise. Usually, public information officers are appointed to govern the release of information out of the government entity. I met with the mayor and the FBI, this was a non-event, and the FBI has told us as much. The email was opened on the mayor's computer, not on the city server. So I strongly suggest to the council that no further public hysteria be stirred up over this non-event, and Mr. Kraus, with all due respect, anything that you have learned within the context of your volunteering for the government should stay in the line of communication to the government officials and is not for public release. Thank you very much.
I got a question, the chief want for us, but up to the city.
Adjourn.
Why was I...
I did not...
You were bored, Merry Christmas.
And you never have been answered my email, much to my calls. And I, I sent out my internal emails, internal, you know, it never went outside, and it could've been a very serious issue.
This is, we're, we're adjourning.
It could've been a very serious issue, and it's not over because we still have holes in the firewall, and we still have security...
Remember you did that. We thank you. You were adjourned.
I don't know how to build it up.
You don't have to pay the bills.
And I resigned because the mayor wanted to do her own thing and hide this whole thing and go around me, so...
You are out of order, we'll take a recess.
We need to find a part.
Direct recess, I'm sorry.
You don't have to leave.
You're not sorry.
We're gonna take a five-minute recess. We're gonna empty the chambers and take a five-minute recess.
Why does every other company, it's non...
We're gonna take a five-minute recess. And empty the chamber. We're gonna empty the chambers.
You wouldn't make the conversation, it's a non-event. I'm a member of the National Association of Parliamentarians, the way you show your respect to the presiding officer is awful. Shame on all of you.
We're back in, from recess, we have a motion to adjourn. We're about to pay the bills. Pay the bill.
Bills paid in November, total expenditures, four hundred and forty-two thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars and nineteen cents.
You have a motion to adjourn. I have a motion by Councilman Benton, seconded by Councilman...
I would just like to tell everybody, happy, Merry Christmas and Happy New Year. I didn't get to get my report, but thank you.
Any opposed? We have three yays, motion for adjourn.